Good morning and welcome to the Burlington City Council Candidate Forum, conducted by the Greater Burlington Partnership's Government Relations Committee. My name is Steve Francis and I will be the moderator for this morning's questions. Our timekeeper is Stephen Brody with the Greater Burlington Partnership. In interest of time and fairness to the other candidates, I'm going to ask each candidate to observe Stephen's signals and stop your response when time is up. The forum will consist of rounds of questions to which each candidate will have ninety seconds to respond. A decision was made by the Government Relations Committee to have candidates answer the questions impromptu. In other words, they have not seen the questions in advance. Our candidates this morning are seated in alphabetical order, Mr. Antonio Bailey, Mr. Chris Repke, and Mr. Terry Snack. Let's start by having you introduce yourselves and share why you are running for a seat on the City Council, and we'll give everybody sixty seconds. Mr. Bailey, we'll start with you.
My name's Antonio Bailey. I have been here for twenty-eight years, and I would like to get back to the town and the city that showed me love when I moved here and had nowhere else to go. I really don't have a pet project for running for council. I would like to see things get done as far as the constituents being engaged in city government as showing up to council meetings, pitching ideas, stuff like that, and basically being honest with the city of what they would like to see done. Give the city the opportunity to put things into place to get that done, instead of judging what the city doesn't do.
Thank you. Mr. Repke.
Good morning. I'm Chris Repke. Just a little background, just so you know who I am. I've been living in Burlington since ninety-four, grew up in the suburb of Chicago. I'm pastor Concordia Lutheran Church here and been there since nineteen ninety-four. Was in Nebraska four and a half years before that. So this is the longest place I've ever lived, and I've enjoyed it, same street for that time. I believe, living here, I see the neighborhoods need a lot of help. That's one of the reasons running. There is a number, quite a large number of vacant homes that need to be dealt with. The city has a process, but as long as they mow it, and it needs to be changed, because those houses are detriment to the neighborhoods and brings down property values, brings down neighborhood life. So I'd like to see, one of the reasons running is more done in the neighborhoods. That's more the lifeblood of the city than downtown. Downtown may be a nice place to go, but the heartbeat, I believe, is the neighborhoods. That's where people live, that's where people raise their children, that's where... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was looking forward, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. You might have to do that.
Mr. Snack.
My name's Terry Snack, and I have lived in Burlington since two thousand and seven. I'm a retired small business owner. I had owned a business called Christian Automotive Repair Services in West Burlington, Iowa, for thirteen and a half years, and I recently retired at the end of last year, after forty-eight and a half years as a professional automotive technician. The reason I chose to run for city council was I heard a lot of things about people not feeling safe, and a lot of complaining about what the city was doing. I decided to get involved about two and a half, three years ago, and went through the program, the Citizens Academy Program. And that really changed my perspective of the city of Burlington. We have so many wonderful amenities and beautiful parks and things. I just want to bring fiscal responsibility to planning and make sure projects are getting the most bang for the buck. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's start with the rounds of questions. Mr. Repke, we'll let you start first with this. First question is, "Most candidates for local office have a pet project or issue of primary interests that compelled them to run for office." What is yours?
The one that got me going and started thinking about running for office, and that was the Madison Avenue Project. That's where I saw the neighborhoods not being really considered in a lot of things, and seeing where things were done that really kind of went down the pike without citizens knowing about it at the beginning. And once the wheels started in motion, there was really no way to stop the wheels from turning. I tried and have not been successful in that. And I think that needs to be more openness with the citizens, so they know what is coming and what is going on. That was one of the major things that got me running. And then that led to seeing, yeah, how are our neighborhoods? Our neighborhoods need help. And without the neighborhoods, without that life in the neighborhoods, things aren't going to go well for the city. And I think that needs to be an improvement area. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Terry?
When I was growing up as a child, people would ask me what I wanted to be when I grew up. And coming from a farming community, the answers typically were, "I want to be a farmer," or "I want to be a cowboy." But I think most young children would come up with the answers, "I want to be a police officer," "I want to be a firefighter," or "I want to be a doctor." That leads into the idea that these are our heroes. And I believe that's a vital source in our community of Burlington. And the main platform that I run on is I want our people to feel safe. I want to make sure that we have good police protection, good fire protection, our ambulance service is taking care of the needs of the people, that they have somebody to call, you know, when they need help. I think this Fire Station Three referendum that's coming up for the vote is a very important thing that comes up. I think it's needed to also continue to promote that safety for our community. I also believe that we should, as a city, continue to look at making sure that our planning of projects are done extremely well, that we are getting the most value for the dollars spent, and that it does affect and is favorable to our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Honestly, as I stated before, I really don't have a pet project or pet peeve, but it has been brought to my attention several times about our homeless situation. Not, you know, taking people in after midnight, that's a problem. That includes more law enforcement being dispatched to certain locations when they should be watching over us while we rest at night. Two, honestly, when there's a lot of homeless people found, they're usually found after midnight. They're laying on businesses, some of the businesses people own. They're laying there, they're sleeping. And most people come in in the morning, early in the morning, and they see these people there, the first thing they do is they call law enforcement, because they don't want to deal with that. And basically, three is when our force, basically when the cops take them overnight, it's one night in jail, and they're right back out on the street the next day. So I would actually like to see and use what I can and whatever resources we can to help our homeless. Put them in a safe place to where they can wake up to a nice hot meal in the morning, nice shower, being able to figure things out for themselves, also create services for them.
Thank you. We'll move on to the second question. Every municipality has challenges in deciding how to address infrastructure needs and providing essential services. Bridges, roads, sewer improvements, riverfront enhancements, staffing, city services, and the list goes on. How should these, excuse me, how should these needs, services, and projects be prioritized and addressed? Terry, we'll start with you.
I think the way to prioritize these things is to look at it from the standpoint, does this really provide for our community as a whole, or is it just a very special sector? Everybody in town pays taxes, and I think every taxpayer needs to feel like that he's getting his dollar's worth out of their tax money and that it's benefiting them as a whole. The thing that comes to mind was the Dankworth Park Pool was brought up, that the heater for the water was starting to go bad, and I believe it was about a fifty thousand dollar expenditure. An item like that, I would be in agreement with taking care of that, because the swimming pool at Dankworth is something that anybody from any income household has the opportunity to use and get enjoyment out of it. So it would be something that would be beneficial to our community as a whole. When it comes to our roads and infrastructure and types of that things, Cascade Bridge is a big thing. There's been a lot of discussion about it. It needs to be replaced, not rebuilt, and it is in the plans, I believe, for 2026 for something to start with that. I could go on and on, but I can see that I'm running out of time, so thank you.
Thank you. Antonio?
Infrastructure is always a never-ending topic in the city, or anywhere you go. I mean, yes, we need to keep our streets well-maintained, yes, we have to stay within budget guidelines, and I do feel that we need to pay more attention to our alleyways. Lately, I have been seeing the side streets being resurfaced, and that's a very good thing. I know there's a lot of complaints about, you know, trucks being on property and messing up property, but basically, it's keeping the stuff down coming to the city, as such as potholes are causing my tires to go flat, you know, you know, just claims just being eliminated by resurfacing the streets. Other than that, as far as everything else that's going on, I think the city looks great. Cascade Bridge, I would definitely like to see that taken care of. That is a part of Burlington's history. And a lot of people used to walk that bridge, some still do walk that bridge, that I see all the time. So I would definitely like to see something happen with Cascade Bridge, whether it's restructuring or rebuilding. As long as that bridge is open, it's a part of Burlington's history.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question.
Chris, Chris needs to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So, for the question. Public safety, fire, police, fire need to be first in the priority of things. The city is never going to have enough money to do everything it wants. That's not necessarily bad. We, everybody has a budget they have to live with, they have to prioritize, and those type of things. Infrastructure is always a problem. But one of the things you have to watch is adding new infrastructure over old infrastructure. When you have trouble keeping up the old and you add new, it just compounds the problem. They mentioned Cascade Bridge. I'm not in favor of a whole driving vehicle bridge there. It's too much money, too much other money needs to be spent in the neighborhoods. Ten million dollars, you say you have two million in grants, eight million. It's just way too much. The neighborhoods need more help. I would be in favor of a walking, biking bridge. That would be something I'd be in favor of. I think Cascade Bridge, some, those two options, full replacement or bike pedestrian, I think should be brought before the voters for them to vote on it. It's a large capital project. I think it should be voted on by the voters and brought in to them as a referendum. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Now we'll move on to our next question. We'll let you start with this, Antonio. In your opinion, what is the biggest issue facing the city of Burlington, and what would you like to see as the council's response to that need?
The biggest issue, I think, as I addressed that earlier, is our homeless situation. Once we figure out what we're going to do as far as a committee, liaison, or whatever we need to figure out, once we get that under control, things will start to fall into place. Crime will go down. Bad falls into place. We will then be able to focus on move two different steps of what we need to do versus focusing on one area. We get one area out of the way, we move on to the next step. There are steps, there's time, and there's things put in place to make things happen. But once we form committees, liaison, or whatever we need, basically it comes down to the public engagement of what they would like to see done. That's what we do as a council, we would do as a council, and that's what we would do as part of being, part of the Burlington community.
Thank you. Mr. Repke.
Biggest issue, there's more than just one. It's a combination. I think one of the issues is, and all cities have, is how do you pay for the things? Taxes and revenue. And you're never going to have enough, and the city needs to prioritize what is most important, so things are taken care of. And what's going to happen, and let's be honest, nobody's going to be happy. "Oh, my project didn't get it," or "this got cut, that got cut." That's kind of part of life. But the city needs to prioritize what is best, what works best, what are we providing? What provides the best aspect of life? And so budgeting and spending, what you spend on is always going to be the issue there. And to say what is the number one priority, you have to say, things change. You get, you know, emergency sewer repairs, emergency this, you got to take fine things for budget. It's going to change, but you got to make sure the basics are done and provided for, so you're not cutting the basics. That's number one, I think that's the number one challenge, just in your own home budget, making sure your number one things are taken care of and not what you would wish. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Snack.
Boy, there's so many things that come to mind. And probably the most important thing is to build pride in this community again. Our council has worked very hard on being open and transparent. Mayor Billups has been out many, many times, and is very open on Facebook, cell phone. Chad Byrd has been very, very open and accessible as well to answer questions, the city newsletter out to people, so they really see and know what's going on. I really wish more people would view some of the videos of the city council meetings, work sessions, and such, and really know what's really going on. I believe the city's really working, going to work really, really hard to keep the tax base low. We really don't want an increase in taxes, but we really don't want a cut in services as well. So that's going to be a really, a very, very hard balancing act to do. And, believe me, Stephanie of the Finance Department and Chad Byrd do a very, very fine job of taking care of that. They just need input, and that's what I hope to bring. To address what Antonio had said about the homeless problem, the city has started a homeless task force to address that. So those issues haven't gone unheard, they are being addressed, and I want to be a part of that fix. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question. Please discuss your community involvement, volunteerism, or previous elected office experience. With that experience, why are you interested in an elected office at this time? Mr. Repke, we'll start with you.
I'm not really involved in the civic. I am on the Economic Advisory Committee. I've just been around, you know, when you're around the city, you just see things. Being a pastor, you're dealing with people and those type of things. So I'm just not that, you know, I'm involved in the community, but I'm not out there. It's just kind of one of those things, it's always been kind of thing, because it's not about me, and that's always one of the things. It's always about the city, it's about the church, it's about other things rather than me. So that's kind of where I stand on a lot of that. Again, you do want to build up pride in the city. You do want to encourage people to be involved in things, and that's very beneficial. I mean, one of the things I think a lot of people miss, I think this year was a large crowd, is the Civic Blast in the Crepo Park on July 4th. So there's things like that, that people can participate in. So again, leadership also doesn't mean necessarily being involved in a lot of things, just being able to know how to lead, how to converse with people, and how to encourage. Thank you.
Mr. Snack.
I've been involved in a lot of things over the years, maybe not as many as I would like, because sometime a person has to sleep. But I grew up in the Durant, Iowa, area. I was very, very active, involved in the J.C.'s organization, the Junior Chamber of Commerce. I'm a past president of the Durant J.C.'s organization. I was also a district director for the Durant area, servicing Davenport, Durant, Wilton, Walcott, Muscatine. In nineteen eighty-five, I was the number one district director in the nation. And that took a lot of work, and I loved it. A member of West Burlington Christian Church, I taught adult Sunday School classes, I sang in church almost every Sunday. I was involved with their reconstruction of their family life center, their coffee shop, doing construction work in the evenings and such. I've been involved in the community, I've been to every work session, every council meeting. I was the only person from the general public that attended all of the budget meetings. I've been coming into meetings for over a year. I've taken the time to go downtown, visit with small business owners, having been a small business owner myself, talking about their concerns and needs and wants. I'm involved as much as I can, and I want to be involved more, I want to serve my community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
I currently, right now, I serve on the low-rent housing board for the city. I've seen a lot, I've just basically been out in the community. I try my best, when I can, when I'm not with our youth every day, to try to get out and engage in the community every day. All times at night, she blasts me for not sleeping that much, because I'm up and I feel the need to get out. I feel the need to get out, drive around our city, get out, walk around our city. Anytime there's a festival or anything like that, I try to engage in people. Also, owning a successful detail business, it gives me the opportunity to interact with people when I see them and provide my services to them. So there's a lot of engagement I have, and there's a lot of future engagement I would like to have, if given the opportunity. But still, even if not given the opportunity, I'm still going to be involved in the community. One day, I hope to successfully build a brand-new youth center, to get most of these kids off the street, giving them something to do other than crime.
Thank you. Last question. As an elected official, will you be looking, will you be looked on as an ambassador for the city of Burlington? In that role, what strength do you offer in promoting civility and the positive elements of the city? Mr. Snack, we'll start with you.
I don't think that'd be a very difficult thing to do, because Burlington is really blessed with so many wonderful events and amenities here, and people are recognizing that, the people that are getting off the cruise ships and coming into town. A lot of comments of how unique Burlington is, and hey, we're going to make a special trip to come back here again. You know, we've got the world's crookedest street in town, we've got a lot of construction going on downtown, a lot of rehabilitation, and bringing up some of these wonderful buildings and such. Downtown's really beginning to look very, very beautiful. But then you look at our parks, and my gosh, I'm still finding new things in Crepo and Dankworth Park, finding new trails and things, and I just love going out there. So, you know, it's not hard to promote something like that. But probably our biggest amenity that we have in the city of Burlington is our people. There are so many people that have such kind hearts and are compassionate and caring. And I think we proved that right here, that's why the three of us are up here wanting to be a part of that, because we, I believe we all have pride in our community, and really want to make things the best we possibly can. So I don't think, being an ambassador to promote our city would be a difficult task at all, and be proud to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
I love this town. You know, coming here twenty-eight years ago, I learned a lot. I've seen a lot, I've done a lot. Marketing this city is not a problem. I mean, we want people to come here, we want people to see how beautiful downtown has become. We want people to come to the riverfront to see all the improvements we've made on the riverfront. I was down by the riverfront last weekend, and I saw a lot of people down there just admiring the scenery. That's how great our town has become over the last two to three years. I would like to see that continue, and yes, I would definitely be an ambassador to showing people and marketing this city. Bring businesses here to show Burlington is a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Repke?
Being an ambassador is good, promoting the city is good, the outside, you do want new businesses to come in and set up housing here, or set up businesses here to provide jobs. But being an ambassador too, you need to be ambassador for the citizens. They're the ones paying the bills. To advocate everything, "Oh, we got to do this because we're a destination city." Well, yeah, but how does that help our residents? How does that help them in neighborhoods that need help? We need to, again, remember who pays the bills, and that's the residents, the citizens, the taxpayers. Being ambassador for inviting people is good, but if you don't take care of those who are here, they start feeling left out. So you need to kind of maybe, you have to move them ahead of the visitors, of the city being a destination place. If you take care of what you have here, if you take care of the residents, then you become a place people want to go to. I mean, we've been to, you know, places, "Oh, yeah, this is nice, but would I want to live here?" No, not that much about Burlington, but other trips. Because they're doing everything just to appease to the visitors. You need to appease, you need to help, and be an advocate for the residents, then also ambassador for outside, and you say, "Look what our residents have, come and enjoy this." Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will start with our closing statements. So in your closing remarks, please share with us what sets you apart from the other candidates. We'll give you each sixty seconds. Mr. Bailey, we'll start with you.
What will set me apart from my other two constituents is I have that ability to just garner that attention, the voice, to be a voice for people and the city. I stay engaged in what I'm doing, and I'm very vigilant on seeing things through. I will not give up, I will fight, 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 and I will find a way to make it work, regardless. If it breaks me, kills me or not, I'm going to make it work. That is something that I'm going to see through all the way to the end. I'm a fighter, I believe in fighting for what's right for the people and for our city. I teach my children how to fight. Not physically. I teach them how to fight for the right things, and that's what I will do for this city. Thank you.
Mr. Repke?
I pay attention to things, you got to pay attention sometimes to the detail. See what's, pay attention to what is being done, what is happening. Make sure the process is a good process, it's a fair process, that you hear the residents and the taxpayers concerned. Remembering too, that any money the city receives, it's taxpayer money or revenue received by those paying for trash, sewer, whatever, it all comes from the citizens, to be responsive to them, and responsive to their needs. And that's one of my major concerns. Process fair, budgets fair, equal, trying to take care of everybody, not putting one group above the other group, but to make sure things are done overall. And that's my concern for the city, and that would be one of my focuses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Snack?
I think one of the things that sets me apart from the rest of the candidates is that I'm committed to being elected to the city council. I retired at the end of last year. I had the flexibility in my timeframe to be fully committed to serving the community of Burlington. I think I proved that by having attended every one of the set work sessions, council meetings, budget sessions, for probably more than the last year. I've been engaged with many of the city staff, and we've... I've been engaged with many of the city staff, and we've developed a respectful relationship where there are times we agree to disagree, but there are also other times we've opened our eyes to maybe take a look at another avenue that might be more beneficial. I understand the city of Burlington was awarded, we're one of one hundred and forty-five cities in the world as Tree City. I understand tonight we will be doing the Purple Heart Award, we'll be the second in Iowa.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I want to thank each of you for your interest in serving the Burlington community. Public service can often be a thankless job, but we need dedicated individuals to serve. I want to thank the Greater Burlington Partnership, its Government Relations Committee for hosting the event. I also want to thank the city of Burlington for allowing us to use their council chambers. And thank those in the audience here and those who have been watching and/or listening online for your interest in the city council primary election. Please vote for the candidates of your choice in the city of Burlington primary on Tuesday, October the tenth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)